Okay, everyone, it is 18:01, so I'll call the meeting to order, please. All right, and welcome to Monday, January 27th, Meeting of the Common Council of the City of St. John. And we're going to start this evening with a land acknowledgement like we always do, and I'm passing that over to Mariah Darling, Councilor Darling, tonight.
The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequess is situated is the traditional territory of the Wallistowick, the Wallistowick, Willowick, sorry, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Micmac and the Passamaquoddy, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources.
So let us pause and reflect on those words for a few minutes. And I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, I'm going to welcome Rayanne McGuire tonight, who's sitting up there in the balcony, I guess that's called a balcony, who is the new Communications Officer for Mayor and Council, so it's good to have you onboard and great to have you here this night, this evening, in that new capacity. And of course, we always have Alex Sullivan here, who also gives us a thumbs up from the audience, thank you. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next is approval of minutes of January 13, 2025.
January 13, 2025, the Deputy and Councilor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is approval of the agenda, and we have a few additions. The proposed additions would be 16.1, which is a proclamation that was circulated to council members earlier, 17.1, a recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to a lease termination, Joe's Samosas, 17.2, formal appointment of Director of St. John Industrial Parks, and 17.3, a resolution respecting the Civic Commemoration Committee.
I'll take a motion, Councilor, Councilor Hickey and the Deputy on the question. It's about Hickey, Councilor Harris, sorry.
She's moved on.
Yes, moved on, and the Deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
And, Your Worship, related to the approval of the agenda, we would require an approval to read the proclamation tonight. Typically, it takes two council meetings.
Okay, that's the Deputy and Councilor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next item is disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any. Next item.
Next is item five, consent agenda.
Over to you, Deputy, for the consent agenda.
Thank You, Worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.8, please.
Okay, then Councilor Sullivan, seconding. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item. I want to say before I go to next item, I see Beatrix is joining us tonight as well, so hello up there to Beatrix. Next, oh, next. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item six, Members' Comments.
Members' Comments. Councilor Harris, you're up first.
Yeah, just a couple of, I mean, we have a new anchor on CBC Radio One, and this is Bass, way here in the morning, so Julia Wright's moved on, she's up for a nomination. Congratulations to all the nominees for Faces of Fusion coming up. If you're not aware of Faces of Fusion, it sort of celebrates various different categories of St. Johners who are up to good work in the city, worth checking out. And I wanted to give my personal shout out to a couple of folks that I've had to dovetail recently with programs that I've been running out of the St. John Tulipry. And there's a lot of cynicism online, and it can seem like the wheels of government don't work very well on many fronts. But I have to say, we've got a number of pretty phenomenal nonprofit leaders who really go to bat for their clients who are either recovering from different areas of lack, whether they're coming out of the criminal justice system, whether they're coming out of a homelessness environment, but specifically our executive director class and different leaders with nonprofits like Efri, which is Christine, and Mary Sonnier at Coverdale, and Margot Shepherd at John Howard, as well as folks like Melanie at Fresh Start, and the various, sort of a conglomeration of people who are involved with people on the front lines at Oflow. I've had a chance to dovetail with them over the past few months, and there's a lot of people working really hard to try to get people into good chances for opportunity and housing, and yes, we definitely have areas of need and problems to solve, but there's a lot of really good people at the helm. So just a shout out to them, and congratulations to all of our nominees for Faces of Fusion.
Sounds good. Councilor Redmond, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I got to attend an event at Prude where they were given over $500,000 in funding from the federal government to continue their program to empower women. It's a really great program, it was great to see. Tomorrow, we actually have a parking study that residents, I'm encouraging you to attend if you're able to. It's actually where the museum used to be in Market Square from 6 till 8. And another thing to note is that the Chinese New Year actually will be taking place at Samuel de Champlain School from 2 until 4 p.m. on February the 9th. It's always a great event, they always have all kinds of great performances, I love to attend. And the St. John Newcomer Center is actually looking for some people to mentor new residents. The commitment hours is only three hours, so if you think that you can help people with their professional careers, try to get things started, then it can be done online or in person, and person to reach out to is Shen Hao Wang at 642-1134. I've done it a couple of times, and it's great to get connected.
Okay, thank you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, I know there's a lot of events going on for Winterfest here in St. John. I want to focus on one particular one that people really seem to enjoy, so reminder that Rockwood Glows is going to take place this Saturday, February the 1st. It'll have activities from 10 a.m. right up until 7, when the fireworks will take place. And that's important because a lot of times fireworks take place too late for the kids to see them. So this Saturday, 7 o'clock, bring the kids, they'll be able to enjoy them, and it'll be a really good time. Thank you, Worship.
Excellent. Councilor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just for those folks who do all sorts of great work and with little funding in the city of St. John, just a note or a reminder that our community grants applications are currently open and are open until the end of the month, so that's just January 31st, so you've got a few days. If you go online to stjohn.ca, you can find the applications, it's not too onerous, and we really like supporting those who are in St. John doing great work and might not be directly attached to us, so please seek us out.
Okay, I just wanted to quickly mention and send out condolences to the family of Lori Flood, who passed away probably maybe a couple of weeks ago now. She was quite a community supporter, was big with the St. Joseph's Foundation, and she was always giving back to this community, and so I wanted to recognize her work, and I wanted to recognize her death here, and to send our condolences as a team out to her family. The Flood's, her father, he designed and developed Kennebec Hesus Park, and that's a very popular place for people to live, so they've been big contributors to that family, to the community in lots of ways. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda, we have two proclamations. The first one, 7.1, Kawasaki Disease Awareness Day.
Okay, I'm going to read a proclamation for Kawasaki Awareness Day, but first I'm going to read you a little blurb, it's just off Google, so you have a bit of background. "It's a rare childhood illness that causes inflammation and swelling of the body's blood vessels. It's also known as mucocutaneous lymph node syndrome. The exact cause is unknown, but it's thought to be related to an infection or genetic predisposition. It primarily affects children under five, especially boys, and is more common in Asian and Pacific Islander populations." So we have a proclamation from them. "Whereas Kawasaki Disease Canada's mission is to ensure Kawasaki disease is top of mind for Canadians, our vision is saving children's hearts from the effects of Kawasaki disease. Whereas Kawasaki disease is the leading cause of acquired heart disease in children and affects children around the globe, early diagnosis is a matter of life or death and of long-life coronary distress. Early detection is critical. Increased awareness of early symptoms is imperative to diagnoses and effective treatment. Whereas Kawasaki Disease Canada is the only Canadian national charity working to improve outcomes of Kawasaki disease and at the forefront of Kawasaki disease issues by collaborating with families affected by the disease and medical professionals. And whereas January the 26th is the anniversary of the day in 1961 that Tomaseku Kawasaki began to recognize a cluster of symptoms that led to the classification Kawasaki disease. After more than 50 years, the cause of the disease is still unknown. Increased awareness is imperative. Kawasaki Disease Canada supports international partners in the quest to increase awareness and is pursuing this proclamation across Canada. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreaden of St. John, do hereby proclaim January 26, 2025, as Kawasaki Disease Awareness Day in the city of St. John." Next item, City Clerk.
And our second proclamation, if there are no objections, you could move that up, Mayor, too, and that's 16.1, International Holocaust Remembrance Day.
Okay. "Whereas the citizens of St. John join the Jewish community of St. John to commemorate the Holocaust and the millions of lives lost in Europe during the Second World War, and recognize the long-established Jewish community in Canada, and rededicate ourselves to never allowing a recurrence of the Holocaust again. And whereas communities around the world have declared January the 27th the day of the liberation of the Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp, where more than a million people were sent to the gas chambers and their agonizing deaths during the Holocaust, as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And whereas we wish to remember the people, communities, and places of worship and other institutions that were destroyed in an attempt to forever erase the faith and culture of a portion of our human race, and whereas we wish to honor the heroism of the underground fighters in the ghettos, those imprisoned in concentration camps, and the soldiers who fought against the Nazis. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreaden of St. John, do hereby proclaim January the 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of St. John." Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
The public hearing has to begin at 6:30, so we're a bit early, but we can move on to item 10.1, under bylaws, and this is for a bylaw regulating outdoor fires in the city of St. John.
All right, Fire Chief Nickel, I'm passing this over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. Before you this evening is a bylaw regulating outdoor fires in the city of St. John. It is recommended that common council give first and second reading to this bylaw. For background, the city currently has fire safety guidelines, but no bylaw that regulates outdoor fires or the adherence to the Provincial Forest Fire Watch, no burn periods. Adoption of this bylaw formalizes what has been achieved through the guidelines, and also adds enforceability and a requirement to adhere to the Provincial Forest Fire Watch, no burn periods or times. A draft of this bylaw was presented to the Public Safety Committee in the summer of 2024, and feedback was received. The GCO's office worked with Fire Prevention Division to incorporate the feedback received into the final version before you this evening. Again, this is a bylaw, and we're recommending that common council give first and second reading to this outdoor fire bylaw.
Thank you, Chief. I was surprised to read that we are the only city that doesn't have one, so that's happy, happy this is happening. Councilor Harris has a question.
Quick question, Mayor. Is there any, like, I guess, within this, do we have any sense around our, there are a couple of community groups that do fires on beaches, close to water, and pretty far away from any wooded area? I guess to those groups that are doing that, what would you suggest be the right approach to having sort of a public area like that with a pretty controlled fire on a beach setting? Or would this just fall under every other generic recommendation in this?
Yeah.
I guess, are there any exceptions? Sorry to...
Yeah, sorry, through you, Your Worship, to the counselor, there are some exceptions. If you do use approved, CSA-approved appliance, you could do that on the beach, but generally it is a generic kind of coverall for the outdoor fires. Okay? Thank you.
All right, can I get, oh, Councilor Redmond has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, Chief, I was just hoping that, just for the sake of the public, maybe you could kind of summarize, like, if somebody's wanting to have a fire in the summertime, like, what sort of steps they should take, how they should approach it.
Sure. Through you, Your Worship, to the counselor, the bylaw really clearly outlines what the different distances are, so, you know, some of them are, it would dictate how far away from wooded area, what type of wood or fuel that you can use, you'd have to have an extinguishing agent. I've not covered all of them, but in the bylaw, it clearly outlines what the requirements are.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion, the motion's in the kit there. The Deputy, take a second, or Councilor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Excellent. Next item, City Clerk.
This one has two readings, so the first one, I just have to read out the title, "A Bylaw Respecting Outdoor Fires Within the City of St. John," and now one more motion for second reading.
Okay, I need to approve second reading by title. Councilor Stewart and Councilor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
"A Bylaw Respecting Outdoor Fires Within the City of St. John."
Okay.
And next item is 11.1, and this was a submission from last council meeting, from Councilor Norton, "With Respect to Creation of a Medical Education Scholarship in Partnership with New Brunswick Medical Educational Foundation." It does require council to pass a motion to lift this from the table, as it wasn't finished at the last meeting.
Okay, so can I get a motion to lift? Councilor Harris and the Deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Councilor Norton, over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor and Deputy for lifting that. The proposed motion is direct the CIO to establish a medical education scholarship in partnership with the New Brunswick Medical Education Foundation, Inc., starting in 2025. I know the notice of motion provided detailed background information and some alignment as it relates to our strategic initiatives, so if there's a second, or I can certainly speak to the motion and attempt to answer any questions.
Councilor Low? Are you seconding the motion? Okay, all right. Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor. Anyone have any questions for the counselor? Got a few questions here. Councilor Harris, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Norton, do you think there's any specific dollar amount we need to aim for this? Is this more of a voluntary contribution piece that, like, council or staff could put forward, or say a committee of council? Or are you thinking this would become a line item that we put forward in the budget? Just looking for that clarification.
I think, Councilor Harris, the question's a good one. I think in keeping with that, it's really to give the CIO latitude in terms of where those funds would be captured, giving him some, I guess, some leeway in terms of the fact, like, look, whether this comes out of grants, whether this comes out of the current budget that's already been put in place. I do believe that there's a room, I know that we articulate that budget as tightly as we can. You know, this is a gift for the next four years to the tune of $10,400 to sponsor two medical students that will repatriate themselves back to the sponsor and community. These aren't two medical students, they're going to find themselves in Greater St. John, it would be St. John proper. This is separate and apart what you see, whether it's Envision, or most recently with the Greater Fredericton Chamber. So it's certainly monies that are going to have to be found, and I understand that things are tight. I'm hoping that the CIO can put his creative cap on and find those necessary dollars, whether they're out of reserve funding, or some other pocket of money as well.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan, over to you next.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is an interesting idea. I, certainly, we haven't identified within council that chasing doctors is a priority for this council. I think for the community, I think it's important. I'm just wondering if there are other things we could or should be doing? Like, I know Fredericton has recently gone down this road of funding scholarships. I don't know, you know, does it all become, even if every city kind of does it, like, what's the strategic advantage to doing this in particular? I do think, just to kind of answer the previous question, and certainly, I would suspect this would likely come out of the grant, or grant funding, because really what we're talking about here is outside of the grants committee and process. We're talking about giving, really, a grant to fund that scholarship. My preference would be that it went to that process. But I, so I guess, you know, I would like to see us have a larger conversation, perhaps we have an advantage, perhaps, because the Health Minister happens to be one of our citizens, that maybe we should be having a bigger conversation about how can we help attract and retain, and what kind of things can we do as a council to support those initiatives? Because I'm a process guy, I kind of find intrigue in the idea. And I mentioned my preference, I won't make the motion at this point, because I don't want to tie up the conversation, or end the conversation, but my preference would be that this would go through the Grants Committee, and that should be happening fairly soon anyway, because the deadline for the grants are the end of the month.
Okay, I'm going to ask the CIO a quick question, because if the Grants Committee is a, comes to council anyway, the grants, so we could say that we've selected this, and we want to prioritize and go to grants, I would think, and then it could work that way. So City Manager, over to you for grants, because then it would just be a matter of getting the paperwork organized or whatever for it, if we're all in agreement?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So in terms of that, you're right, there is money allocated within the Grants, and so this would be a, you know, a fairly small component, given we're talking about one out of four years, and then in subsequent years, it would be considered as part of the overall budget process. So this would be 10,400, and, you know, in terms of having it be fair and equitable process, I'd encourage that, you know, they still apply, and it can be considered. If it's a wish of council to say that you want this to be a selected one over all of the others, you can give that direction as well, which I think this really does, the motion at hand, apart from just clarification in terms of, are we using 2025 grant funds, or are we observing it within the overall budget?
That helps, that's helpful. Counselor?
Am I on there? Am I hot? There we go. I guess so council is, knows where I'm coming from on this one, just to make it abundantly clear, so I guess you have some clear direction in terms of how to place your vote. The city of Bathurst, the city of Deapp, Greater Moncton, province of New Brunswick now, town of Rossay, town of Riverview, and Tantramar have all found it within their respective budgets to become more competitive in this area. I'm, and I appreciate Counselor Sullivan giving leeway to the discussion so that it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, the discussion doesn't die. I would prefer that this not go through the traditional grants route. Let's remember, whether or not this motion passes or fails, the New Brunswick Medical Foundation can go through the grants route regardless. There's nothing precluding them from doing that. In fact, you could possibly say whether or not this motion is successful, they could then make application to that funding, that envelope of grants money in addition to. I'm sure they won't. What this does do is this makes us competitive in an area that's been not only identified by our province, but by our residents that we serve, and you're right, does it perhaps circumvent process a little bit? Could make that argument, but nobody's going to argue that the health and wellness and the medical field is extraordinarily competitive now, and there's an obligation on this council to try to be as competitive as we possibly can, whether it's in that space, economic development, public safety, recreation, and a number of other fields. There was a time when this counselor saw us never get in the lane of housing, and now we're looking at becoming more competitive with housing. This is no different, and this is a very modest amount of money over a four-year period. You don't have to look very far and find out that a single-family practice boosts the provincial GDP by $285,000, that the provincial tax revenue is over 74K, the municipal tax revenue is $13,000 annually by one single-family practice, employs 3.2 full-time medical professionals, spending in the community is increased by about $162,000, and the average income is higher than most sectors, coming in at around 83.5. There is approximately in our province 180,000 citizens without a primary care provider, and we all know where our physicians' practice medicine is in good chance where they will continue to stay because of that connection to that community. We have an opportunity here to, you're right, do something new, I believe, do something innovative, and have those students come back and set up, whether it's in a community collaborative clinic, or whether it's open up their own standalone practice, and come back to the community that sponsored their education to begin with. Thank you for the word.
Thank you. I think you've probably convinced us, Counselor, and maybe the logistics of paying for it can be left to you, CIO, but I've got, there's more questions here. Councilor Redmond's up next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the spirit of this motion. I mean, it's a massive gap that we have in our medical system, no question. I worked in healthcare for nine years, I saw it firsthand, and the New Brunswick Medical Education Foundation is incredible, I encourage people to support them. You know, I, so I totally appreciate that, but I did heard through the grapevine that possibly we didn't have to really figure out where to get this money from, because Envision's already paid $20,000. So I confirm with Mr. Andrew Beckett that they actually did give $20,000 to be able to support them, which of course, over $3 million of city money goes to Envision every year, and as... every year, and as a region, they're supporting as a region. So, you know, I mean, I'm definitely not really in favor of putting people at the head of the, the queue at community grants either. I think that it should, you know, we should trust the, the committee, let them go through the process, we have two counselors there, and let them follow their procedures. And I don't think that we have to look for the money, because the money's already been given from the city, as far as I'm concerned, which is great. I think it's great that they did that. Growth is, is exactly what they're pushing for, and they've supported where they needed to, so it's wonderful, you know, absolutely. So I totally appreciate, like, the spirit of this, there is a gap. I'm so glad that Envision supported this, 100%. But, you know, I'm not going to support the motion tonight, just because I think we've already given it. If you look at our grant policy, we can't double dip. You can't take from ethno-cultural grant and then get a community grant and then get an arts grant, you have to take one, and even though Envision's not part of that, it's still a budget line on the city budget. So I totally appreciate Counselor Norton, what, you know, what you're trying to do in keeping people in the city, and doctors, we need them badly. But I think we've already given, so I, I really appreciate, and, and thanks to Envision for doing that, because I think it's wonderful.
Okay. I hate to interrupt this good discussion that's going on, but we're at 6:32, so, public hearing, we have one public hearing on, so we should probably table this, and then we'll come back to it. I've got the, I've got the names in the order. I've got the Deputy Counselor Darling and then Counselor Ogden, so we'll go in that order when we come back. So Counselor Harris tabling, and then I'll take us, Counselor Sullivan on the question, all in favor? Okay, opposed, motion carried. All right, let's do the public hearing next then. Oh, no, you're supposed to be calling that. Over to you.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Yeah, next item, 9.1. This is a public hearing, and it's for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. There's a planning advisory committee report and staff presentation, and it's with respect to application fee refund.
Okay, Punkage, you're introducing this for us? Away to you then.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. This evening's public hearing is for a text amendment to the city's zoning bylaw pertaining to planning application fee refunds. The proposed text amendment will enable city staff to issue refunds for planning applications based on a set criteria. The process change will streamline the refund process and enable funds to be issued without the approval of common council. This application has been evaluated by the Planning Advisory Committee, recommending support, and included in your package is the recommendation to amend the zoning bylaw. I will now turn it over to Eva Mattson, planner, for the staff presentation on this file.
Good evening. So as introduced, staff initiated a review of the process to refund planning application fees, and I'm here to present that amendment. While refund requests are not common, they do require common council authority to consider it this time. Only common council has the authority to issue refunds on applications that involve a bylaw amendment or Section 59 condition, and then for any committee applications like P A C variances or temporary uses, there's actually no refund structure. And then for development officer applications, there is an allowance for a staff to refund up to 60% of the fee. So staff initiated this review to better establish criteria for the refund of planning applications and delegate that authority to administrative staff. And this would just really streamline that refund process, reduce that red tape, and really clarify for anybody who has questions. Staff did undertake a review of other municipalities on how they handle refunds, and we looked at Fredericton, Moncton, and Halifax, all of our neighbors. And in brief summary, in Fredericton, full refunds are granted if an application is withdrawn before public notification, and then no, no refund after that. In Moncton, a partial refund is available if an application is withdrawn before the P A C meeting. If public notice has been issued, they kind of minus that public notice fee. And then for development officer variances, it's the same, no refund up to the public notice, and then they minus that cost. And then Halifax was pretty straightforward, provides a 50% refund if an application is withdrawn before public notification, and then afterwards, no refund. And they don't issue any refunds for development permits, variances, or any of that sort of thing. So our, our proposed amendments are pretty straightforward for council or committee applications, rezonings, P A C variances, temporary uses, et cetera. It would be 60% refund prior to public notice being issued, and then 0% after that public notice, mostly just because this means staff has already done the review, a lot of reports have been completed, and a lot of the work has been done. For development officer applications, it would be 60% refund before the decision is rendered, and then 0% after. And then we would still allow for council to maintain the authority to grant full or partial, or partial refunds at their discretion. And again, this would just really help improve clarity, reduce that red tape, and allow administrative staff to handle refunds, rather than come to you each time with a, a report for every request. P A C and staff are in alignment, and we recommend adopting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I'm now going to open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here tonight or online who would like to speak against the fee refund amendment that's being proposed. And I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the fee refund amendment that's being proposed. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the fee refund amendment. Hearing, no one for that. I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the fee refund amendment proposed. City Clerk, did we have anyone registered to speak tonight online?
Uh, no, your worship, we did not.
Okay. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the fee refund amendment, and I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the fee refund amendment. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask my team if there's anyone here who has any questions for Ava, for your staff. And if not, I'm going to ask the city clerk for the motions required.
This would require the approval of first reading by title and then second reading by title.
Take a mo, a motion for first reading. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Sullivan on the question, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
All right, now take them, thank you. Take a second, or Counsel, Counselor Darling on the question, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
Okay, that's it, thank you. City Clerk, back to...
Yes, so your worship, we would go back to 11.1, and we just need a motion to lift that from the table.
Motion to lift the, Counselor Harris and Counselor Sullivan on the question, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Deputy, you're up first, your light should go on first, and then Counselor Darling's light should go on, and then Counselor Ogden's, and we'll keep them in the same order, if effect, so deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I'm 110% in favor of this. I think this is something that we absolutely have to do. Other areas are doing it, and we got to be competitive. I guess if the question, and I certainly trust our finance department, our city manager, the question is how to pay for it. I, I mean, I'm fine with using community grants. I, I have no problem with making this a priority for the St. John, City of St. John, and if we can get a, you know, a guarantee that this will go for four years under that system, I have no problem with that. But once we make the commitment, it is a commitment. And I, I want St. John to end up with the same opportunities that other areas have. And I'm not sure, I mean, I know a lot of areas are doing it, and probably some don't have an option, they have to do it out of their operation budget, you know? But we have a fairly significant amount of money for community grants that other areas probably don't have, so I think this is a really good use for it, and I would support doing that if that's what it came down to. It has to be a guarantee.
Thank you. Counselor Darling, over to you.
Perfect, thank you, your worship. I just have a few quick comments, just based on, you know, my own experience in, in the healthcare sphere. My, my one thing is, I think we're in a really unique situation in St. John with the Dalhousie New Brunswick campus, here at the, on the U N B campus, so every New Brunswick resident who goes to Dalhousie for medicine has to come to St. John to, to train. So I think we have a really, really more unique opportunity than other cities to build on that, that relationship very strategically, and during the four-plus years we have, all of these med students here really make them fall in love with the city. And so I just wanted to add some of that context to, to the conversation, because I think, you know, while there are strategies, strategies, sorry, that other cities are using, I think we have a really unique opportunity here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ogden, over to you.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with it. All research shows that the number of university students you have is directly related to your economic and population growth, and the lowering of your demographic age, and lowering of poverty and, and raising the educational level. We're in pretty good shape in our trades, but we are by far the lowest in Atlantic Canada in university numbers. Moncton now has three independent universities, two community colleges, and U N B just put a satellite into Moncton, and we're just a tiny wee thing, and, and St. John does not control its university funding, it goes to Fredericton. We're the only city in Atlantic Canada that doesn't control our university funding. So I think this is a great idea. The whole idea behind the medical school, which took years, and I thank all those people who worked behind it, was we were losing our doctors. And we were losing our doctors, and we figured out that if doctors are trained in an area, they tend to stay in an area. And if St. John is going to grow, that is one of the areas we will grow right there. We generate lots of tax dollars in the city, and as you know, because the industrial tax doesn't stay here, so we can have a very bright future if we just take control of it and move ahead, and I think this is a good step towards that, and I want to thank Counselor Norton for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stewart, I'm going to you next.
Thank you. I will support this for sure. I just have a concern that, that this is going to come out of our community grants money, are we adding to that money from another city pocket? Because the lineup right now, applying for community grants, is already stretched super thin, so there's not a lot of room there. I think this is a, this is an important scholarship. I, I would like us to be known for doing things like this, so I would challenge staff to find this money, where it's got to come from.
All right, Counselor, yeah, I'll go back, okay, this is round two. Counselor Harris?
Thank you. I'm overall in support of sort of a approach here. I just, I put it back to you, Counselor Norton, in light of Counselor Darling's comments about this unique opportunity, the spirit of the motion is understood by myself, and I am supportive of, of it in that sense. The community grants piece I wouldn't lean toward, just because there is a diverse set of other community needs, and we do have reserves on a few different fronts that could be partitioned from. So I'm fine delegating that sort of rationale to the C A O to sort of pull and pick, but there is a really unique opportunity with Dalhousie. And I think, you know, capitalizing on that and having a bit of a broader focus on this captive audience that's here, paving the way for that family practice, again, the spirit of it is, let's get more doctors in St. John, that's a no-brainer. And, you know, if we have money at the end of the calendar year that can easily go to this fund from some different sources within government budget, we, we always, not always, we sometimes have surpluses that can't be easily just moved around. This makes sense, it's a, it's a community priority, there's a shortage. But yeah, I guess I would just add my two cents to that, and to, and, and back to Counselor Norton, to consider when working with staff on this, because I think I'm happy to kind of delegate my support to the, to the motion here, which is bigger than just a scholarship fund, it's getting doctors into St. John to stay here, whether that's, you know, providing the, the students that do come to the Dalhousie School an opportunity to have a bit more of a personalized tour and a little bit more of an ambassador approach to, hey, here's the highway, we've paid for you to come set up here, take it or leave it, we did throw some money toward your scholarship, but not only that, you know, this, that, and something else. There's, there's a number of facets here, and I do think it's time, like Counselor Ogden pointed out, that we play a little bit more of a quarterbacking role than just a passive role in getting some of these services. So anyway, my two cents for what it's worth.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go to Counselor No, Counselor Lo for round one.
Yeah, if it's coming from the community grant, that's two counselors, and the counselors could possibly change after the next election, and it might not be their choice. I mean, I can't see how staff can force counselors to put that at the top of the list. So if that's the case, I mean, we can say all we want around here that that's going to be it, but if the counselors around the community grant decide that they don't want to put 10.5 out of the community grant, there's all kinds of reasons, all kinds of people apply, and we're taking 10.5 out because we said about it two years ago? I think that's wrong.
I'm going to let the C A O speak to that, but once we made a commitment, then that would be it, I would think.
Yes, your worship, that's, that's exactly. So we would look to, if, you know, council's supportive of this, we'd look to budget it as part of the overall budget process for '26, '27, '28. It's really just the question for '25, because it is an unbudgeted item.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
The C A O stole half my, half my comments. Yeah, we have all sorts of budget policies, one of which is, we no longer rob Peter to pay Paul within, right? We try to stay focused on what we budget. So for this year, it would make sense that it would come out of the community grants budget, because that's really the discretionary budget we have for this sort of thing. And I would suggest that if it became a, if this passes to become a four-year commitment, we know it's there, so then we would just, it would become a line item wherever for the next three years. So I'm not, I, my earlier comments weren't about pushing it off to that process indefinitely, but just particularly for this year. So if, if it does pass tonight as a directed thing, that would make sense to be where the money came from. To the four years of it all, I have had experience sitting around here, being on an earlier council, 2008 to 2012, where we did make a lot of mistakes and do too many grants off the cuff, and helped dig a very big hole for the, for the council in the City of St. John. So, you know, my caution comes from a little bit of experience and just that previous worry, but I'm also aware that in 2012, there was an election, and a new council came in and canceled a lot of the commitments of the earlier council. We see it in the United States, right? A president comes in and signs a thing, and suddenly, a whole lot of things the previous president has done, so, you know, we can only make that commitment as much as we can make that commitment, that's the power that we have. So there could be another council that comes in and changes their mind, but I'm not saying I want that to happen, I'm just saying that that's a possibility, and it has happened in the past. So for what it's worth, my recommendation that if this passes, it goes to staff, would be that for this year, become community grants, because that's the budget line we have, and then we just build it into the budget for subsequent years.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ogden, over to you.
Yeah, Counselor Stewart and I are on this committee, and we, he and I, Chris, Greg and I get together and we go through a spreadsheet, and we're, we're both smart with money and everything, we deal with a lot of money, and we only get one-third of the requests. So I caution you against going against the grants, because there's, we usually start, not to speak unfairly, but with the community centers, what we think is the greatest need. And then it gets really hard, and there are people who have spent a long time submitting their grants, and the deadline's coming very soon, and for this to come in on the grants, I'm in favor of splitting money in, but I'm just worried about the grant program that people have been, been putting a lot into it, and then we have to put a lot into it, and then we meet with the staff and compare our numbers and everything, like, there's quite a process to it. And I'm, I'm afraid that if we're mandating it coming out of the community grant program, we are going to have to cut other people out. And I'll leave that with the C A O, he has a magic tree with dollars on it. So, you know, he, he can find that money, and that's, but, you know, and I know Kevin Fudge is really, really liberal and flexible, so I think he could probably find the money too, maybe not take holidays this year, Kevin, and, and go from there. But I really caution against going to the community grants fund at this time, it is late in the day.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Redd, one, round two for you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm a little surprised by the conversation, because I think, you know, as a council, we've approved the grant policy, and it feels like we're kind of going against our own policy and encouraging people to dip into two pockets of cash. But I mean, you know, I, I appreciate this, because this is one of those things that, yeah, we're short doctors, we're short teachers, we are short people in hospitality, construction, and the list goes on. Is this municipal responsibility, essentially? Probably not, probably kind of falls a little more to pedal and those sort of things, but we have community grants. I don't like the idea of taking from community grants either. So I have a question, Mayor, I want to send it over to CFO Fudge. I want to send it over to CFO Fudge. Do you have a pocket of cash somewhere, CFO Fudge, that you think you should take this one other, other than community grants? And what's your opinion on taking it out of reserves?
Over to you, CFO.
Thank you, your worship, to the councillor. I guess, first of all, we wouldn't be able to take it out of reserves because the grant policy actually prevents grants from being funded through reserves unless it's actually specifically budgeted in advance by council. So reserves wouldn't be an option. For this one, it would be simply going over budget and hoping that by the end of the year, we have got a surplus that is able to absorb that overage. We are in January, so it's very difficult to determine at this point where we're going to be by the end of the year. But yeah, that, that would be the option. My other comments would be, you know, this is certainly meets the definition of a grant in the policy. You know, council actually enacted this policy in January 2023, so it is your policy. And there's nothing in the policy that would disqualify this application.
Yeah, true.
However, I would advise that the reason the policy was put in place, it's expressly stipulated in the policy, is you want to create a policy that would ensure grant requests follow an open, fair, equitable, transparent process for all grant applications, with the merits of each request evaluated using, you know, established evaluation criteria, prioritized based on the funding we have available with our ultimate recommendation. And I guess with this one, a direct request to common council doesn't allow for that process to unfold and is contrary to that spirit for which the policy was put in. It's certainly within council's right to approve, you know, this request notwithstanding the policy. Obviously, you can do that. I would just advise that by doing so, you could undermine your own policy and invite more direct requests that will be directly considered by council rather than going through a full process, which was intended by the policy. That's the only warning.
That's great.
But other than that, with something, you know, $10,000 on a budget, that's 190 million or so, we would, it would just simply be an overage on the budget if you don't want to take it from community grants. And we would look, monitor the budget as we go through it the year to see if we can absorb that.
Thank you, CFO Fudge. And this helps council with its growth agenda, but so does the YMCA, Prude, the newcomer center. And this, if it comes out of community grants, is going to take from there. So I think we need to be fair when we do this. Thank you.
Councillor Norton, can I switch you with the deputy, and you can wrap up for us?
Yes.
Is that all right? Okay, deputy, you're next, and then we'll go to councillor Norton, and he'll wrap up for us.
Just so that I'm clear, Commissioner Fudge, so what you're, what you're saying is we've got really two options if we don't take it out of the, well, yeah, we have two options. We can take it out of the budget, which is budgeted for, and we're, right now would be 10,500 over budget today. But by the end of the year, that could go away from a surplus. Or we could take it out of the grants for one year and put it in line item. Okay, so if it's for one year, I'm flexible. I could go with, you know, taking it out of the budget. And I know you, you're going to find that in the next 10 months. I'm sure you are. So I mean, if it's going to go on a line item in next budget anyway, then, you know, I don't see why we should counteract our own policy, as you put it, and open that door. So I guess, I guess I would support the motion as it is, knowing that it's going to be a line item going forward, and it's only 10,000 out of a, what'd you say, 190 million, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Norton, over to you for the wrap-up.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks to, thanks to deputy and councillors for, I guess, I guess a rich discussion on I knew it would generate some sort of conversation, just didn't know the, the breadth of that. I, I do want to, I do want council to, look, we're all aware of Dalhousie Medical School. We're, we're all aware of those relationships. Folks, we've been in this community, and we've been leaders. We understand how, how things interface. There's lots of good suggestions around here. It's a highly competitive field. And I, I want to remind us of something in this sense when I was writing this, that I guess sometimes when we're advocating for, for a program or resources, or we're funding as a necessity rather than a grant, there's, there's a key, there's a key piece of that, of that argument. And it hinges on this idea is the, is what I wrote. It hinges on the idea that the initiative is essential for achieving core goals, fulfilling obligations, or addressing critical needs. That's where this is different than a grant. It addresses core goals, it fulfills some of our, you could argue, some of our obligations to our constituencies, and addresses critical needs rather than being just a optional or supplementary benefit. It does meet some of our core objectives of a community, which is grow. It addresses an urgent need. There's a, a bit of an ethical responsibility on this council to provide the very best care we can for our constituents as well. And with the number of people that are waiting in line for primary care, it's akin to what we just, many of us heard on CBC in Northern Ontario, waiting for a family doctor, which is becoming more and more like The Hunger Games. It has a sustainable impact on our community over four years. It can't be disputed. And last, the fifth point I want to draw us to is the consequence of the absence of family physicians in our community will have a detrimental impact on our ability to grow and prosper. So keeping those in mind, thank you for the discussion. Thank you for entertaining this. Thank you for lifting it from the table. Thank you for those that are supporting, and those that are on the fence. I think this is, I think this has been good. And, your worship, I'm four seconds over. So thank you for, for your grace.
Thank you. As everyone knows, I don't vote on this, but you're not wrong in saying that it's very competitive. I think PEI is offering 300,000 signing bonuses for, you know, for family physicians, obviously. So I would, if I was voting, I would support this. I think I would leave how we figure the money out to the CFO, how we're going to do this. But that's my two cents. So I'll, so the motion is on the floor, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Just councillor Redd one. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item, city clerk.
Next is item 12.1, Chief Administrative Officer, Update on Select Catalytic Projects. This also needs to be lifted from the table.
Motion to lift, councillor Sullivan, councillor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, over to you, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening once again. For the catalytic projects update, I'll update on our four infrastructure projects and on one of the advocacy projects, industrial parks. There's been a lot of activity over the past year as it relates to that one. And really, this evening, we're kind of concluding a lot of work that has been underway, you know, with the nonprofit and the creation of St. John Industrial Parks 2024 Limited. They now hold all the land. That's been transferred to them with the exception of one parcel, which is scheduled to be attended to later this evening. As well, there's a new general manager in place. All the board of directors has been stood up and gone through orientation, operationalized. And there's one final board of director member to be, you know, is scheduled for council's approval later on the agenda this evening. And then, so the new entity is really operational, active, and pursuing industrial park opportunities. As it relates to the schools, the province Anglophone South School District and the city continue to plan for the work of the new South End and North End schools. All the existing, our pre-existing buildings have been demolished and, and removed, and we're now into tender phases. So the North End school is tendered, set for construction in the spring. And I understand the South End school is expected to be tendered this month, and also construction to commence in the spring. So we continue to support the province on that, as well as do work in and around the area of the South End school, a tender that we just released recently for work relating to a large trunk sewer in the Rainbow Park area. Looking at the new comprehensive recreation facility, that modern facility to be located in East St. John, you know, there's MOUs in place with the Field House and the YMCA. And last ball, we submitted an application for federal funding to the Green and Inclusive Community Build Fund. And we're anxiously awaiting word from the federal government because that is really necessary in order to unlock that project and the opportunity associated with it. And as far as Idoli Macahomic, the gathering space, a few updates there. When I last reported, we're waiting on a heater core component for heating of the patios. That's now installed and operating for a while. So the patios are heated, the chiller, we had to do some maintenance on that, but the ice is in place now, and, and it's operating well. We are awaiting a few items, like stage monitors to go up, that will further animate the space, and those will be installed once they arrive. Completion of deficiencies is ongoing as items come in, the final remaining items and weather permits. And lastly, this spring, we'll be installing signage around the space, wayfinding, storytelling, that sort of thing. So all of that will be, will be coming. And, and then lastly, as it relates to affordable housing, the city team continues to focus on it through a number of different means. The intake for the Affordable Housing Grant is now closed. A total of 10 grants have been awarded to incentivize 148 affordable units to be constructed. The intake of the Housing Accelerator Fund Grant Program is also now closed. We received 13 applications, and the half grant awards will be confirmed very soon, should be this week. The Affordable Housing Soft Cost Grant remains open for applications. There are five applications so far that have been awarded grants for a total of 77 affordable units. In the Barrett Green Residence Project, a rapid housing initiative that the city secured funding for, that project being advanced by Kaleidoscope Social Impact is still in progress. Foundation work continues. They've poured platform for the elevator, you know, a number of things happening there, and they have footings in place for concrete pour. So that's, that's advancing and continues to advance. And lastly, we do have our dashboard up on the website, I know I mentioned this last time, for our half metrics. It's updated around the first week of each month, and it has all of our various Housing Accelerator Fund metrics on there for the public's information. And that concludes the update, your worship. Subject to any questions?
Excellent. Anyone have any questions for the CAO? If not, I'll take a motion to receive for information.
Move her second.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is item 15.1, under General Correspondence. It's a letter, 211 New Brunswick, from the United Way, request for proclamation. And there's a recommendation to refer this to the clerk's office to prepare the proclamation.
Councillor Sullivan, councillor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is 15-2. It's a citizen letter with respect to renaming a Park Street Extension, and there's a recommendation to refer this to the CAO.
Okay, I'll take a mover. Councillor Stewart, councillor Sullivan, sorry, and councillor Stewart on the question. Councillor Ogden.
I received a number of calls about this and suggested they write this letter, from delivering pizza to the odd, I don't want to say fire trucker or anything like that, but to the odd municipal truck going to the wrong street. And they do divide in the persons, they said, what would you suggest? And I said, well, write a letter. I think it's hard to rename a street, but it's possible. I know in the community group that I'm on, all kinds of people want streets renamed, and you run into GPS and citizens and things like that. But from what I was gathering is that a number of citizens would like to see this renamed something else. Thank you.
Sounds good. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, we looked at this before, and I, I guess the question would be to the fire chief because the safety aspect is a big thing for me. But I don't, I'm not sure how significant it is. So I'd ask you, chief, is this something that you've encountered a problem with, Park Street, Park Street Extension, for medical or fire?
Through your worship to the councillor, I can't speak for certain for that certain address, but there are certainly, you know, we have some issues with Princess Street, Main Street. Anytime there is a duplication, then there is, there can be confusion. So, no, it is nice to have one street name.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got the motion on the floor. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. It's interesting because when Lancaster became part of the city, all those street names stayed the same. So there's two of a lot of streets. But he makes a good case in the kit. All right, city clerk, next item.
Next, 17.1, a recommendation from Committee of the Whole. This is with respect to lease termination Joe's Samosas, and the resolution would read, resolve that the city terminate the lease with Joe's Tea Has Samosas, DBA Joe's Samosas, effective February 28, 2025. Further be it resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute all such documents ancillary to such purpose.
Deputies moving that. Councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is the Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to formal appointment of Director of St. John Industrial Parks and approval of assignment agreement and non-disclosure agreement. And the resolution's a little bit lengthy on this one, but I'll read it out, that the city authorize the mayor and clerk on behalf of the city and the regular members of St. John Industrial Parks, being Chief Administrative Officer, Chief Financial Officer, and General Counsel for the city, to sign a members' resolution generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on January 27, 2024, and any other documents necessary to formalize the appointment of John Logan as Director of St. John Industrial Parks for a three-year term from January 13, 2025 until January 13, 2028, that the city enter into an assignment agreement generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on January 27, 2025, with St. John Industrial Parks Limited for the purpose of transferring the obligations related to the land transaction in the industrial parks to St. John Industrial Parks Limited, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said assignment agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto. Three, that the city transfer St. John Industrial Parks Limited, the land identified as PID 55237077 for $1, following receipt of evidence satisfactory to the CAO that the remaining terms and conditions outlined in the assignment agreement noted above have been met. And four, that the city enter into a non-disclosure agreement generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on January 27, 2025, with St. John Industrial Parks 2024 Limited for the purpose of ensuring that the confidential information can be shared freely between the city of St. John Industrial Parks, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said non-disclosure agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Okay, so I'll take a mover in a second. Councillor Low, deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
And the final item was a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole with respect to the Civic Commemoration Committee, and it's that councillor Darling be appointed Chair of the Civic Commemoration Committee and councillor Ogden as Vice Chair until the end of their term on council.
Councillor Redd wants moving that. And the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Over to you, councillor Low. He puts a big smile on that when I go to councillor Low at the end of the night. Thank you, councillor Low. All in favor?